Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I'm gonna call the Monday, July 6th, 2020, meeting of the Rockingham School District to order. I'll have Mr. Benson can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Shall we review and approve the board minutes for June 1st, 2020?
I move that we approve the board minutes and accept them from June 1st.
2020.
2020.
Discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of June 1st, 2020? Please say aye. I will do roll call. Priscilla?
Aye.
Jason Benson?
Aye.
Jason Terry?
Aye.
George, absent. As the ayes have it. Communication and public comments. Do we have any communications or public comments today?
Do not see any in the chat.
Okay, moving right along. Policies?
This point, pretty busy with policies. Once things get underway, some of them are going to be tied to the new guidelines that are coming in from the state when we reopen in schools. So we want to make sure we're going to have some policies in place. So I would think probably sometime in August or September, we'll have some policies we're going to have to adjust.
Okay. Superintendent Central Office Report. District Updates.
Okay, um, welcome, everybody. So I made a few notes for tonight, so I wouldn't forget anything because there's quite a few updates I'd like to give the Rockingham Board that will also be given the SU Board during the week. So on July 13th, the Central Office will be reopening again. We do have, we will have safety procedures and protocols in place. I believe I shared them with most of the Board, if not all the Board members. So although the office will be open, we are still encouraging everyone to conduct business via email and phone calls. We still want to limit the amount of traffic there in Central Office. So now, like I said, that'll be July 13th. I sent out a update to all Board members, community staff, anyone who I had access to an email address, and I sent it out through school messenger. So the WNSU has set up a reopening task force team of teachers, administrators, Board members, facility directors, transportation directors, student services. Let's see what else. And our first meeting will be on July 9th. During this time, one of the resources we'll be using to assist us in the plan is the survey that was posted on the WNSU website, and we had well over 300 participants in that. So I was very pleased to see how many people took the time out to fill that lengthy survey. Once the plan, and so will be, those are one of the many documents that we'll be using. We'll also be looking at the I created the SU safety plan that I created and sent out to everyone. I created that one first, so it will give us a good starting point in regards to when we're creating something like this, I felt it was important that we have something that we just don't create, and it's lengthy, and we put it out there, and people really have to search to see how we're going to be addressing when students return to the school. And so the format that you saw, it was kind of like a graph, and it kind of breaks it down, so it would be very user-friendly for people to look at. They have questions about, you know, what do visitors do? What are we expected to do when kids get on the bus and off the bus? And areas like that. So it was important that we had a very user-friendly document. So that's what we're trying to accomplish here. Each school will have, have to go a little deeper in regards to the plan that they're rolling out and communicating with their families, because each school is different, the layout is different. But we just want to make sure that this task force, we have a lot of people around the table, and we're going to have a lot of eyes on it and ears on it. So hopefully, we'll come up with a plan that is easy to follow, and it's not too lengthy. And like I said, that first meeting is going to be on July 9th. Priscilla is going to, I've asked Priscilla to be on it as a, as a Board rep, and Colin James' Oscar asked to be on it. So I thought it was important that Board members, this is such a large thing that they are part of it, because the perspective that they can bring to a task force like isn't, isn't something we're going to get from any of us. So I want to thank Priscilla and Colin James for being part of this, this task force. In addition to that, we are currently in the process of interviewing and hiring a Central Office Business Manager, as you all know. I thank Jason Terry for being part of the first round of interviews. And this week, we'll be interviewing a few more possible business managers. In addition to that, so that, just so all of you out there in public, but I know the Board knows is that Edie Lou Cole has retired. And as of recent, Stanley Budsek is retiring from Transportation Supervisor. So we're also, I'll also interviewing for that as well. In addition, we are looking for a new principal for Central Elementary School, as most, if not all, of you in the Board know, but also the public. Mr. Nemlich has decided to not return to Central Elementary. And so he will be missed, and it was a last-minute decision, but we support his decision and thank him for all the years of service he gave to Central Elementary Schools students. In addition to that, we would like to welcome Helen Richards Pell as the new principal for Athens Grafton School. Ms. Pell will be taking the place for Ms. Hardy, who has become the principal at Westminster School, replacing Mr. Cussius, who's left, also be closer to home rather than having these long commutes. In addition to that, you'll hear more about this at the SU Board meeting this week, later on this week, as the auditors from H. RH Smith have completed the 1819th audit, and will be presenting that at the July 8th WNSU Board meeting. And I think for now, that pretty much covers it.
Thanks, Chris. Does anyone have, does anyone have any questions for Chris?
Rick, I have a question.
Okay.
Is the survey still open?
No, the survey was, I closed the survey, so I could start, you know, tallying the results and opening it up to share with the various Board members. So it's no longer open. I closed it last week.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know whether we wanted to encourage people to answer. So thank you. That clarifies that.
Jason Terry?
Chris, who else is on this task force and how many people? And could we get some more details on that?
Yes, the, the task force entails all principals. It's gonna take us a pretty long list. So we have the two Board members, we have school nurses, counselors, principals, facility directors, technology individuals, restorative practices, student services. So all in all, I think is about 25 to 30 people on this task force. Thank you.
Anything else? Principal reports. Ms. Bukowski, would you like to go first?
Sure. Well, thank you. And I, we haven't met since we wrapped things up, so I've got a couple of points from the ending of the school year for the students. The first one being that we had our awards assembly virtually by grade level on the last day of school, where we handed out various student awards. One of our big ones being the PAW Award, which is a positive attitude towards work. Different grade levels handed out different awards, and 8th grade handed out a basically, they acknowledged some of the effort that some of their students put in for online learning, et cetera. And all the students were sent their certificates via email. From that, our moving up ceremony was June 15th. George and Priscilla were there, and so was Jason, since his daughter was moving up. And we used the drive-in model, drive-in theater. We had perfect weather, and we've received many positive comments from the families who were thankful that we were able to have a safe socially-distanced ceremony. The following day, we had a celebratory parade where we drove through all of the towns where our students reside. And I want to thank and shout out to Sean McGinnis and Stan Romerall, because they put in a lot of hard work making sure that the parade would be a success and that we wouldn't be leaving out any of the towns or communities. And in an effort to help us obtain some targeted information and data about remote learning, we issued our own surveys, one to our teachers, one to the staff, and one to our students. Mr. Quaggio and I reviewed those results with the teachers and staff during the final week, June 15th, when we had various meetings. And we're going to use that data to help us debrief from remote learning and make adjustments in the event we have to return to some sort of remote or hybrid learning in the future. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Bukowski. Anyone have any questions for her?
No, but I wanted to comment that the moving up ceremony was absolutely fantastic. You did a great job, Karen.
Thank you.
Sorry, I missed it. I had a prior obligation, it turned out. Ms. Hazard?
Hello, everyone, and happy July. So I, too, will be backtracking a little bit, since we haven't met since the beginning of June. Much like the middle school, we had a fantastic 4th grade move-up ceremony. Small in our parking lot, but it was really joyful. We had 100% attendance, and George, you were there. It was pretty fantastic. And we also received lots of compliments. The day before, the 4th grade teacher and I visited each student's house and put a lawn sign on their yard, and that was pretty special, too. The staff, at the end of the year, we created a video thanking families. You can find that on our Facebook page and also our website. The Endwell meetings that, let's see, our school counselor, Stephanie Fuller and Jen Heidbrink facilitated with staff members were highly valued, and lots of great information came out of that, just processing the year. The end of the year specifically. Overall, our attendance from 420 to 612 was pretty good. We had 92.28%, which is pretty high. The lowest was in kindergarten with like 86%, and then the highest in 4th grade with like 98%. So pretty successful attendance, and also work completion. So super proud of families and very grateful to our families. And our students did a tremendous job. We had a summer send-off reverse parade that was well-attended and lots of fun. Let's see, we also collected devices from our kindergarten and 4th grade families if they weren't going to be needed for summer learning. And then the last week of school, not for teachers, not for students, but for teachers, we ended with some Fountas and Penel professional learning and a staff meeting where we generated lots of great, kind of like what Karen did, but not in a survey format. We used like a chalk-tough protocol and just created brainstorm lists of like what would be needed if we were to return to remote learning. So that'll be helpful for our meeting on Thursday, as Chris mentioned, with the task force. A big shout-out to teachers and parents for their outstanding flexibility, dedication, and work during this school dismissal and just overall in general. And also to Bert and Bert Lawrence and Gary Kenny, who have been working diligently to prepare the building for fall. And thankfully, we do have enough desks and storage for each student, so I'm super excited about that. And that's it.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Hazard?
I got one, Rick. Just that, speaking as a parent and parent, speaking for parents of others in the 4th grade, we were very surprised and very delighted with the end-of-the-year ceremony. So thank you and, and your staff. That was, that was really wonderful. Thank you.
You are welcome. It was a lot of fun.
And the visit, and the visit as well. That was, that was terrific.
Great. That's great to hear.
Anyone else? Well, we don't have Mr. Nemlich, so. Business Office, May Financial Report. Teresa with us?
Rick, can I just comment on, on the central one? The central moving up one was absolutely well-done. They, we drove through the parking lot at the high school and saw all of the children that, that were there, that were getting done for the year, and all of those children. So that one was well-done as well. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Priscilla.
I am here.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So actually, the reports that I sent out, sent to Chris is actually for June. So I know that even though it said May, the last meeting, I actually gave you guys reports that had expenditures and revenues caught up right to May. And then, so the one I'm the one that I produced today is actually for June. As of June 30th, as it sits right at the point, at this point, we still have some clear adjustments that we'll be making and everything else as we finish wrapping up the year and things in regards to FY '20. So the revenues at this point, the anticipation, because the student, and I, and I don't know the history on this, but I know that the adopted and anticipated revenues for tuition, I thought maybe, you know, am I missing something? And I've been over this throughout, but the student headcount and the counts I get from the actual schools with the students and everything else clearly shows that we have a lot more students that are tuitioning from Westminster and Athens and Grafton into the middle school. And yet, the budget, so it appears that if you scroll back to page 1, you'll see that it looks like we have a big $252,000 surplus. And in excess of what we anticipated for students, then you've got Athens, which here is $48,000, and Grafton 32. So altogether, you're talking about, you know, $332,000 in revenues that weren't, you know, weren't budgeted as anticipated. So I don't know if, like I said, I don't know enough of the history at this one moment to say, you know, was there just a peak this particular year or something like that, you know, without going back and looking at a bunch past data and everything else. But so if the, if, if it's a peak, then clearly next year, that number's going to drop drastically on the anticipation student enrollment and everything else, but.
So my understanding is that this is pretty typical and pretty common for us, and where, like every, it seems like every year that I've been on the Board, we've had a surplus at the end of the year, and it, and it generally is related to this. Now, I, I don't really understand the formula that we use to calculate how many kids we're going to have and where they're going to come from.
Yeah, and sometimes, some, some districts will use, even if they know there's supposed to be 10 kids, they might take it at a 70% because of the fluctuation of the coming and the going. And that, certainly in the end, we'll do this every time, and I seen it when I was at one of my other districts where it seemed like, you know, it almost looked like we were under-budgeting every time, but it's just because of the way this, the, the promise of who was coming and going, and then it didn't fathom, or it changed.
Yeah, I mean, it's always nice to have the surplus, but it often feels a little bit like sandbagging and, you know, like, you know, could our, could we actually have a, could our budget numbers actually be lower if we were, if we could nail the number closer?
Sure. I, I mean, I think that the anticipation of, of having it closer to the reality would be there, especially if these particular numbers right here are strictly based on student enrollment, like I said, coming from Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. So you've already got that information from year to year in the projection. And, and again, without the history of looking back to see how much of the promise students really ended up at the middle school in the end, because they could potentially, and that's the other thing I believe, that if they have choice, there's no guarantee they're going to pick Bellis Falls Middle School. And I think that that was some of the, some of the thought process, if I, if I remember what, you know, when I was asking Edie about it and stuff and how it was explained. So I know that that played a role.
Yeah, yeah. There's not, yeah, that, that's plays a big role in it, is how many are going to go to Compass, or, you know, some will even go to the grammar school just for the two years, or.
Exactly. And we have a lot of students that are tuitioned out in that respect also. Yep. So I think, I mean, other than that, the, the revenues are there, nothing, you know, we don't have a lot here. It's basically all based on the tuition for the students coming in and a few miscellaneouses here and there. And so the, and the $500, again, is from, I know this title doesn't tell it here, but it's allocated from prior year fund balance and everything else to help reduce the taxes and the revenue that needed to be raised. So that sits there and kind of helps the, helps the bottom line reducing, but that's about, that's about as much as with the expenditures. I mean, excuse me, the revenues. So as far as the expenditures go, we've finished up posting all the payroll and everything else for the fiscal year of '20. Anybody who got their lump sum got that this week. It was a very, very, I can't tell you how long last week was. It was like one big day. And we ended up having to produce basically three payrolls in the long run. And part of it is still the, this is the first year using this new software that we've actually done a full closeout of payrolls. And then doing in accruing payrolls for the people that want to be paid over the summer months, summer weeks, however you want to word that. And then, of course, preparing for the very first payroll for everybody for the new fiscal year. So there was a lot of that. So in this Rockingham expenditure report, what you see now is all the expenditures are fully posted in regards to wages and benefits. There are a couple, and I know I've told you before, but I still have to get these loose ends tied up with like workers' comp, billing back from the SU and billing each district back, and I just have not gotten a chance to get that done yet. We have a, we don't have too many purchase orders open, but we have enough open that we're still working through those, and we've had the schools go through their list to see what we can close out and what really we're still waiting on an invoice and everything else. So when you look at the bottom line in regards to what's still encumbered, it's strictly based on open purchase orders. And again, Marlene and I are working on that with the schools or whoever, and we're going to be working on that this next week, because I really'd like to get a lot of this, you know, closed up by the end of the, by the end of this month, is to have these tied out as much as possible. There's nothing I can think of at this one moment to say that there's any red flag or anything in regards to expenditures that are sitting out there that, that look outrageous or anything like that, or, you know, or you know, questioning, so. But given the circumstances as they are, we're, we're pretty close to being tight on revenues and expenditures for Rockingham. That's all I have to offer at the moment.
Thanks. Questions for Teresa? Would anyone like her to send us a copy of that?
Please.
That'd be great.
All right.
Okay.
All right, if you could send us that, and then if we get it, if you update it sometime in the near future, you know, feel free to send it on to folks so we can review it.
Okay, all right. So if I make revisions or, well, clearly, it's going to change a little as we're closing out purchase orders and other things are getting paid, yes. So I can send revised additions.
Yeah, or you just have, just as long as we, if there's not any big revisions, have, you know, we can have it for the next, the next meeting. Do you think, do you think we'll have end-of-year closed out by the end of, by the next meeting, or?
What date is your next? Apologize, I might.
That's to be determined, I guess, at this point.
Oh.
It'll either be in two weeks or four weeks.
I can't say in two weeks I'm going to have it closed out. I just know that we've got loose-end things and like I said, and sometimes some of our entries, one district's depending on the other. So I, I've got to make sure that I got the SU making sure that all the billbacks, bill, yeah, all the billbacks are done, to make sure that those individual districts are done.
Okay. Well, if no one has any further questions for Teresa, I think we can move on to WNSU Board Negotiations Update. Not really a lot to update there, so I think we have a, we have a SU meeting Wednesday, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, there may, there may be, there may be an update there, but right now, I think things are just kind of in a holding pattern. Committees? I don't think we have any committees to report upon anything.
No, we don't.
Says unfinished business for discussion action, stipend discussion. I'm not sure where, I think that's just a carryover from Mr. Terry's.
Yeah. I have another discuss on it. Yeah, I believe we kept it on there, just in case there were any other follow-ups that anyone from the Board wanted to have in regards to the board stipends.
I think that, that, I think we will have more discussion on that, when, especially when it comes up to budgeting, which I hope we start soon, so that we're not last-minute, last-minuting it this year. 2021 school year planning, I think that's just to kind of keep us updated.
Yeah, because we're meeting on Thursday, so maybe there will be more next time.
Yeah. Okay.
There should be a lot to share next time.
I have a question, Rick.
Okay.
Under that school year planning, is that a, is that a good time to talk about, you know, what the overall goal is, or do you want to talk about that in director comments, or I have some questions, concerns as we get closer, so I don't know.
I think, for me, this is kind of a open, I'm leaving it on here so that we can have an agenda item about what's going to happen next year and talk freely about it while it, so that it is on the Board. So it is an actual agenda item, so. So it is an actual agenda item, so have at it.
Well, I was just, since Priscilla's on the task force, I wanted to, and and Chris, you obviously are, I'm assuming you're gonna be on that task force as well. What is the goal gonna be to make sure our schools are open?
Well, the goal is is to create the overall safety plan in regards to social distancing, making sure that where we. By law, we're gonna have to screen any, anyone and everyone who comes into the building, so it's setting up procedures to make sure everything's in place. So when we do open schools. We're um doing it as safely as possible with all the social distances and PPEs in place for the. For the students and anyone who comes into the building.
Can I, can I ask a couple of follow-up questions? That's right. So when will, or maybe a suggestion, maybe not a question. Um, you thought, have you thought about testing two weeks prior to opening school?
No, we haven't, I mean, because it it it's uh, it's very fluid, it changes all the time, so um, right now. We'll be testing students every day, starting on day one and anyone, really anyone who comes into the building or any of the offices. Testing in advance. You know, testing in regards to what, Jason?
So my thought is if you test, so it takes what, you you know, in a couple of days and then you're gonna be quarantined for fourteen days, you you get this thing, right? So you test two weeks out, somebody gets, somebody has it two weeks before school, why wait till school starts? Let's just test before school, get the data and move forward instead of opening school, test, oh. Now we got two weeks into it, now we're like, now what do we do? So just something I think about, I guess.
Yeah. Let me just answer Jason real quick. Yeah, that that we're, we're more of a screening, not necessarily testing, we're screening in regards to looking at the main. Um, signs of anyone who might, you know, be COVID, you know, temperatures and stuff like that. So we're not necessarily testing, we're, it's our job, responsibility to to screen as people come in and taking temperatures for everyone who enters the building.
George?
Uh, that's what I wanted clarity on, that's, I'm good.
Priscilla?
Can I at least comment that, you know, I think we are looking at Vermont being pretty safe. We, the last time we had any case in Rockingham or Westminster Grafton was um May, in the middle of May. And before that was back in March. We've had one death in the last month in the whole state of Vermont. And we have very few cases, most of those are in the northern part of Vermont, and I think when we set this up. We'll be looking at making sure that our students and our staff are safe, and that's part of why I think. Um, Mr. Pratt is doing the task force. Um, from one standpoint, it's too bad this wasn't done last month. But it wasn't, so now we're dealing with that at this point and it will get done. I think you can feel very secure, the the, there's a twenty-five page report that we will be reading before the. Task force to make sure that we're all aware of all the things that the state is requiring and doing for that. So I think parents can feel very secure in being able to send their children. Also, if you look at the reports on childcare centers that have come out. Um, even in New York City, which is your high um area for this being a problem. They had almost absolutely nothing that happened at any of their childcare centers. Um, it doesn't seem to go from children to adults, it seems to be the families that might possibly get it. And then if they do, they're going to be tested um in for the COVID nineteen. And then those children would not be coming to school, I'm sure, as a result of that, so I think we're we're pretty safe.
Chris?
Yeah, the uh. They am the guidance put out that Priscilla's referring to was put out on June seventeenth. Um, so it is, it is pretty lengthy, it gives us um. Guidance and what we need to do in regards to making sure um. Buildings are safe, sanitized, not just for students, but faculty, staff, everybody, so it's pretty lengthy, it's pretty in-depth, but um. I feel very confident that we're gonna um be opening buildings and education that's gonna be safe for everyone who who um attends, so.
Jason and then George?
So I just want to go on the record saying that I want the schools open, whatever you have to do. Um, if. I don't know quite how to put this, what up. You have to be around somebody who's sick before you can get sick. There's no, there's nothing out there in our area. I want, I think the school should be open, I think that we should be doing what we should. Um, are supposed to be doing, like living our lives normally, you know, I'm just kind of tired of it, I'm kind of tired of talking about it. Um, I want, you know, I want football season to start, I want, you know, band to start, I want field hockey to get going, I want soccer, I want. Cross country, all that stuff to get going, because you learn just as much doing that stuff as you do in school. And I want, I want people to to stand up and say. Damn it, let's get going, you know, instead of being afraid and living in your bunker all the time, I'm just tired of it, just come on, let's go. So, you know, I, I saw your twenty-five page document, Chris, and I I don't know if. You have the right people on the bus, so to speak, that are gonna police all of that stuff and that, you know, so. I don't want one mistake to be, okay, now we can't do anything because, you know. Sally, the teacher, or Sally, the student, took their mask off that day. It's like, jeez. This is frustrating, so there you go.
Yeah, just to follow up before, you know, George goes real quick, Ja- Jason, is that um. Yeah, the 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 twenty-five page document that the the state released to all of us is lengthy, there's a lot of stuff, as you can see, there's a lot of protocols and procedures we have to put in place. The, we, at this point, we have no choice, um, we're not giving a choice to, the schools need to be opened unless. We have a situation where we have someone who is diagnosed and has a confirmed um COVID case. In any given school, then what they call is it would be um a reactive closure, meaning, you know, similar to what we just went through. That's, you know, so we'd have to, you know, reclose the school down, sanitize it and take that. As far as athletics go, as of right now, the state has made it very clear that um, right now, as as basketball and football. Will not be taking place.
Wait, what?
Basketball and football. There, right now, it's my understanding that there's no basketball or football in the fall because of the close contact and the guidance they have in place.
So what happens then with your, uh, let's say I have a son, which I do, who plays those sports? Will he be able to play them next year?
Just a question for the uh, the state and the Athletic Association, the VPA handles, Vermont Principals Association handles all that, so. Um, I believe I sent out the blurb from the VPAs, the the bill in regards to uh. What sports they're going to allow and which sports they're not at this point.
So I just, I just want to say. That I'm really disappointed, and I know it's not your doing, I don't know who's doing it is, um, but that person should be ashamed of themselves. There's not a reported case of COVID, and what do you tell a person who works their ass off all offseason and works to add those skills? And then all of a sudden you can't, you can't do those, so you know, that's, there's no, there. That's bullshit. That's all I'm gonna say, so.
George, did you have your hand up?
Um, kind of goes back a little ways, but um. Rather than, I'm just gonna mention that maybe um rather than just um acting reactively. Um, in regards to testing kids or screening or whatnot, um, if there's. You know, just take consideration to um be. Make preemptive decisions rather than um reactive. That's all, that that was a tough act to follow.
Yeah, and I think, you know, based on, that's what the plans, you know, that the task force is gonna be working on is designed to be, it's not designed to be a reactive plan. It's a proactive plan, doing everything we can to screen everyone on a regular basis and keep the building germ-free and students and. Faculty and staff.
Priscilla?
Uh, yeah, let, let me just also say to Jason that, um, just keep tuned because the governor keeps adding stuff that we can do. And he's taking it really nice and slow and methodically, we're not having to close back up like has happened in. Places like Florida and California and Texas, and he's doing it this slow, but he may decide. That we can do the football and the basketball by the time that it comes around, so just think some positive thoughts and maybe we'll get there.
Priscilla, I I I appreciate your comment, but here's the thing, we live in Vermont, the liberal capital of the world, okay? So there's no football, we're talking about no football eight weeks before, we're talking about no basketball that starts in December, it's July sixth. Give me a break.
I'm your governor.
No. It's not just him, it's all of them, all of them in my tenure, whatever.
George?
I just want to say that what a boost um watching a baseball game was the other night for this community in this town and um. You know, I may not feel as passionate about it as as Jason does at this very moment, but I can tell you, the world was right when I was watching baseball the other day. And a lot of people felt the same way, and um, I understand that we have to take safety precautions. I get the whole deal. Um. Right now, yeah, we're in Vermont and we're doing pretty well and we need to live our lives. Um, I know it's not, I'm just saying it out loud, that's all. I watched a baseball game and it was beautiful and basketball would be the same thing.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a sports guy, but my son's band was rehearsing just before this meeting and I've got to tell you, it was, it's only like the third time. They've actually all been together in three months, and it was great just seeing them like plugged in and smiling and being creative and and. You know. Doing it, so. Jason?
My last comment on that would be, I talked to Bob Johnson uh with the VPA last week, and he said. How goes summer sports that started baseball and all that stuff will determine how football goes and how all the other sports go. So for them to already cancel that stuff, that is a lack of integrity on the VPA's part, a lack of integrity. And how many parents at that baseball, uh, I haven't been to one, I hear there's a lot of people, how many parents are shoulder to shoulder, how many players are shoulder to shoulder? Give me a break, give me a freaking break.
Well, Jason, we appreciate your passion, but you're kind of yelling at the wrong people here.
Yeah.
Priscilla, did you have one more thing to say before we move on? What's next? Board goals and discussion, I would like to talk about budgeting because that's something that we're gonna be rolling into pretty soon. We have. Three, four fairly new board members, you know, George has been with us a year, Priscilla's been around for a while, but. Um, I think that, I think that we need to. I think that that's, that's one of the, something that we need to start focusing on sooner than later, so I really would hate to be. Doing it all last minute. So our goal is to develop and propose budgets that achieve the greatest educational returns to dollars expended. We don't have any action items as to how we're gonna do that, other than, you know, what we should have is being proactive. You know, planning ahead, getting good information ahead of time. Um. Thinking about our prior, you know, this is just me like, kind of brain dumping some thoughts as they come into my head, you know. What are, what are some of our priorities that we want to spend our money, you know, where we want our money to go this year? Given the current whole world climate, you know, how is that, especially right now, how is that gonna impact that, so? Comments, thoughts, ideas, is that enough for discussing board goals today and keeping them moving?
Well, at some point, we're gonna need to know exactly what we're, what we're dealing with, right, as far as um. Um, funding from the state, is that all, that's not finalized at this point, right?
No.
No, so at, we kind of need to know that um before we really get into it, but. I guess are there areas for discussion prior to?
Yeah, I, I think that if we start looking, you know, if we can get a, a good end of year report from Teresa, look at, you know, where did we spend our money last year? You know, I think getting ahead of the curve and looking at like, where did we spend money and and maybe trying to like. Work, work with the, with Chris and the principals to, you know. See how we can, see how we can do better. Um, you know, personally, the, through all of this, I was, you know. My numbers may not be exact, but I was kind of amazed, uh, something inspired me to look at the, the Bellows Falls Police Department budget for. So in two thousand eighteen, they were like one point two million dollars for twelve police officers and three cruisers. And the Rockingham School District was about ten million dollars where we provided, you know, fed and transported. Like five hundred students and employed a hundred and thirteen people. Um, you know, so like when people talk about how much education funding costs, it's kind of like. For me, you know, I'd like to see some, I'd like to get my numbers a little bit closer, but I, that, for some reason, that just made me. Feel like, you know, maybe the education funding isn't, you know, not that we shouldn't control it, but. And try, you know, make sure that we're spending wisely, but I think. Other places need to make sure they're spending wisely as well. Priscilla?
Yeah, also, there, there was a hundred and fifty million dollar uh grant that was given to the state. To support education that we need to know more about too, I think. The governor just mentioned that this last week. Maybe even on Friday, I don't remember which day, it might have been Wednesday. But I think that's gonna enter into what we're looking at too and while we're doing things.
Anyone else? All right, we will move on to new business for discussion or action, if any, resignations. Other than Mr. Nemlich, do we have any resignations?
I do not, no.
For, for Rockingham, you mentioned Stanley is retiring, is retiring or has retired?
Is retiring.
So as of June thirtieth, or is it?
End of August.
End of August.
But he's still gonna, he's still going to be um. Um, a bus driver and support us in that way.
Oh, that's nice.
He'll be around if we need a driver.
Principal Search Committee Board Rep.
Yeah, so um, the job has been posted and, you know, I, we would, you know, like, if, under normal circumstances, we would have done the search. Um, the same way that we had done it for Saxons River, have, you know, total involvement of um parents who want to come in and stuff. So, um, but under the circumstances, well, it's, you know, this search, like many of them have been so far, will have to be through Zoom. Um, so we'd like, you know, we'll have a, I'd like to have a, at least two um board members on the, on the search committee. What I'd like to, what, you know, you know, what I'd like to do is, you know, have um at least two board members. Um, you know, be the sec, you know, look at the resumes that come in, um, along with the uh, myself and and Dr. Carey. And then from there, what I'd like to do is if we can set up different um times where we can have the candidate on Zoom. And have um parents who want to ask questions, um, community members, so still involve people, but from um. The point of, through. The computer rather than in person, so that's where we are right now. I know, you know, I think Dr. Carey does already posted the position. And we'll start um going through the, the resumes of, to see who's um out there right now. It is late in the game, I would um anticipate, you know, if we, that we, we may have to go with an interim for a year. Or just a one-year contract. Sometimes if you post it as interim, you're not really gonna get. Um, people willing to give up what they have now, so I would say this late in the game, we'd want to post it as a one-year position. And revisit it at the end of the year.
What's the difference between a one-year position and an intern, interim position? What's the difference between a one-year position and an interim interim position?
If you mark it as one year, it's not as scary for people as the interim, interim mean. You know.
Inter means it is only one year where a one-year position means you might get renewed if you.
Yeah, it just, you know. You probably won't get as many applicants, you know, if you tell them it's just an interim position because it means that one you, we only watch it for one year and. It can turn into more than that, but you know, I I've learned to keep it, you know, this late in the game, just as a one-year position.
Okay. Priscilla.
Uh, Chris, would we want that possibly as a one to two-year position, that way you can discuss it if you've got somebody. That you really thought was really, really good, then you could certainly go two years, but. You would also have the option of one, or do you feel strongly that we definitely definitely want to go just the one?
I think we base it on we have the candidates and that and based on, you know, how they fare, I mean, you can. I mean, if we get the right candidate, of course, you can offer them a two-year contract, but. Um, we'll have to wait and see who we get would be my advice.
What would you get better candidates if you advertised it as a one to two years, what I'm saying, thinking? I don't know.
Possible. I think anyone who out there is looking for a principal job, one year, two year, wait, you know, things are right now, I don't know if it's going to make that much of a difference, but um it could.
And did you do an exit interview or should the Rockingham Board do an exit interview of Keith?
I spoke to um Lynn and I both talk spoke to Keith, um and then once things settle in a little bit more, I will send them, I have an exit. Interview form that I I try to send out to employees when they're when they're leaving, so I will send that out to them.
And can you share his reasons for doing that? With the board at some time?
At some point, yeah.
So who would like to participate on the hiring team? I was gonna nominate George, I think he'd be a good one.
I would second that nomination. You're welcome, George.
Thanks, guys.
Are you, are you accepting that nomination, George, or are you?
Yeah, that'll that'll be fine.
Okay. I think that is, you know, as a.
I was considering, I was considering it anyway, so that's that's fine.
I I like the idea of a of a parent of a recent um grade school kid and. Your sensibility seems good. Priscilla, do you want to be the other person?
No, we're doing the task force, I don't know, um I could if no one else wants to, but. If there's someone else that feels strongly about doing that, then.
Mr. Benson or Mr. Terry, do either of you have a? I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to doing it, but I don't want anyone.
I think it would be an injustice for me to do that at this point, I don't know enough about this board quite yet and.
Oh, this is more about.
Neither do I.
This is about, this is about knowing people and being a good judge of the person that you're interviewing, in my opinion, but. I guess you've got George and me.
Think the uh.
I think that's good, Rick.
Middle school, I think the vice principal for a middle school should just do it and and uh multitask. My opinion.
Rick, I think I think it would be great if you would do that, I think you've had experience with doing that with um the last ones, and I think that would be a great thing for you to do. Thank you.
Did everyone hear Mr. Terry say out loud what I was afraid to?
You want me to repeat it?
Sure.
I think it's a good idea for a vice principal of the middle school to be the principal at the central school and do both instead of paying the two salaries. Heck, we're not, might not even have any school, what's the point?
Mr. Benson?
That's a very good possibility that I think we also have to consider is. Maybe there isn't going to be a full school year coming up.
Yeah.
That's all.
Oh, it's worth, it's worth Chris and Karen and having a conversation about that with and Chris, Karen and and and. Why am I drawing a blank on his name, I've known him for so long.
Dana Quadro.
Yeah.
I I will go on record as stating that I'm not in favor of that, you just hired, they just hired a principal for Athens Grafton. Which is less than half the students of Central School and um middle school has over two hundred and fifty students. I personally am not in favor of that recommendation and feel that you'd be doing an injustice to Bellows Falls Middle School. And to Central School.
And Central.
Yeah, I know that, you know, we're looking, saving money and cutting corners and stuff like that, but on as.
I don't want to cut corners.
On leadership of a school when you we're dealing with two of the biggest schools in the in the supervisor union.
There's, there's a difference between saving money and cutting corners. I want to, I want to be fiscally wise. Okay. Appointments? I don't believe we have any.
Have none.
Directors' comments, Priscilla?
Come back to me, I want to think.
Mr. Terry?
Uh, I have no additional comments, this might be my last board meeting, I don't know if I can keep doing this, I feel like I'm banging my head against the wall, so. Something personal to any of you guys, but our state is in deep trouble, our town's in deep trouble, you know, we're not even considering. It's it's, we make the. Lot of dumb decisions, so just my opinion, I guess, I'm in the minority, apparently, how do I, how, Chris, how do I get to uh? You know, I feel bad for all of those kids who work hard all of the time and they're some of the best students, so how do we, how do, what is the? What can the parents do for all of those football players and all of those basketball players, not just my kid? How do we get them to New Hampshire, can they play field hockey, what's the difference between field hockey and football as far as uh uh together? Have you seen a field hockey game, you know, they're pretty aggressive, uh young ladies, soccer, you're telling me that there's that there's uh no contact in soccer? I mean, come on, you're an ath, you're an athlete, you you know this.
I know that, but you're like, like Rick said, you preach into the choir, none of these decisions are in my control whatsoever, I, you know. All I can do is pass on the information that I'm getting and I think if parents and board members. Um, the VPA makes that decision in regards to athletics, so that's where you would have to go, it's. Is these are not decisions that are left up to the superintendents on any level.
But we have to, you have to come up with solutions, is there going to be fall baseball, is there going to be something else for these kids to do? To, you know, uh further their career, you know, New Hampshire, um a stone throw away. How do I get my kid and any other kid on the football team wants to go play a fall mountain, there has got to be a solution, having no football is not a solution.
Right, point of order, this is director's comments, so we need to just.
Those are my comments.
And then go, Jason, you're fine, you are fine, you are absolutely fine, so we just need to let allow the directors to make their comments. And then, and then, and then, and begin the meeting, thank you.
Thanks, Jason, Mr. Benson?
Yeah, right now, these are muddy waters we're trudging through and we really need to. See what is going to be happening from the state level down, and it's not even just the state levels, the federal level. And if you want to go beyond that, it's worldwide, so until the WHO and the CDC has a better control of. What they think is going on, it's really hard to make any decisions at this point for anybody at any level in the education system. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we're gonna start getting through this pretty quick.
Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
George?
Um, yeah, again, just the moving up uh stuff was great, um graduation, uh high school graduation, I know, wrong platform again, but that was um. That was really great, I was glad to see that happen, um. Uh, where was I? Oh, um regarding filling positions and whatnot. At this point, you need to, we need to explore all those options, uh. A a shot from the hip saying that um, you know, we don't support it, all right, well, it's not the most ideal, we know that, but. Um, you know, it's got to be explored and and we don't even know what we're we're going to have for funding yet, so. Whether we like it, it doesn't feel good, I understand, we it needs to be, we need to explore that stuff, um and. Yeah, I guess that's it for me.
Thanks, George, Priscilla?
Yes, opening is crucial for the social, emotional development of all of our children, and so. I'm really pleased to see that the task force is going to get busy with that, making sure that it's safe. And I feel strongly that schools will be safe with with what is going on and what what is happening. Thanks.
Thanks, Priscilla.
Can I add one more thing, Rick?
Sure.
Um, just for the record, I I'm not in favor of a a favor of a hybrid model, either. Either it's safe enough for our kids to go to school or it's not and and they they stay home, which I'm really against that, but. Uh, a hybrid model is gonna be a messy, messy thing and. Um, kids are gonna get left behind and I don't want that either. All said.
Thanks, George. Um, my director's comments are mostly going to be pointed to Mr. Nemlich, who's not with us tonight, um, I, you know, I. I believe one of the first new hires was uh in administration was him when I first got on the board and I've worked with him all through. Um, we've spired a cut, we spired a couple of times on a couple of topics, but getting to know him and having conversation with him. He was a great asset to our community and to our school. Um, in a, in a, in a one-on-one conversation with him, I had one time, his main purpose for wanting to be at Bellows Falls Central. Elementary School was because he felt he could make a difference there, that was his main reason for wanting to work at the central ele, central elementary was because he felt he could make a difference. And that's what was really important, every staff member I've ever spoken to spoke so highly of him. Um, he was, you know, I think he was a great asset to us and I'm very sad to lose him, although I totally understand. His choice and I think that, you know. Probably lots of places are going to see people leaving because suddenly they're not having to commute however far and um. It makes a difference, so. We continue to have some great principals, Ms. Bukowski is a rock star, Ms. Hazard is proving herself as a rock star and they're they're wonderful people as well, it's just, you know, we. We, I I really, I strongly feel we lost a great one with Mr. Nemlich and I'm and I'm very saddened by it. So. But everyone else, you're all wonderful, everybody's wonderful, let's all be happy and sing kumbaya. With our next board meeting would be July twentieth, twenty twenty, um, I can tell you that I won't be there. It is my son's sixteenth birthday, so I'm gonna be celebrating with him in some way. George, your mouth is moving, but nothing's coming through.
There we go, I clicked it several times, okay, so you said the twentieth?
Yes, July twentieth.
Uh, as a potential, I may not be around either, actually.
Do we want to shoot for the August third meeting? And just skip over the July twentieth, Priscilla?
Problem, Rick, is that with this task force going on and setting up schools and stuff, I think we need one. Um, maybe we need to do it, uh do, is there one on Tuesday night that we could do it on Tuesday night instead, uh I. I just, you know.
Well, the task force would have their own. Sorry.
The task force are just, I think the task force might just need feedback or input from us, George, not. So, Chris, do we want to, do we, I I don't know what our options are for an alternate date?
Um, I'd have to go through the calendar, um, let me just call my calendar up real quick. Um. So you guys are. Twentieth. Twenty-first, twenty-second is an SU meeting. Twenty-third.
Do we want to try to do something before the SU meeting on the twenty-second?
Could do it that, I mean, the SU meeting doesn't start until six thirty, so you could have a.
Five thirty to six thirty?
Thirty meeting, yes.
Are you, are you asking to do or to do it on the same day?
As the SU meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never liked that, George, I know.
That's fine, but if we get into something, then. I don't want to have to be cutting it short, I mean, not saying that we will, but.
Yeah.
That bothered me last time and.
So we want to do this on Tuesday? Did you say the twenty-first was an option, Chris, or?
Yes, it is.
So how about the Tuesday at our regular time at five thirty, the twenty-first?
Sounds good.
Okay with me.
George?
You're all glitching out, I missed it, what'd you say?
The twenty-first at five thirty Tuesday?
Twenty-first? Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, let's do the twenty-first at five thirty via Zoom. If you're old like me, you remember the TV show Zoom.
I'm just looking forward to meet and, you know, getting together in person one of these days.
Would be nice.
I'll see you tomorrow.
No, seriously, we should think about it because, you know, other other entities are doing it and, you know, we can do it. So everybody feels good and um. You know, show the world that we can actually be around each other and it's not a problem.
Good test of hybrid model.
Do we have any um picnic tables at the green space at the middle school?
The only problem is that we are being um told that we should be holding it by Zoom at this point, and so if if that's the recommendation, I think we're setting the example that that's what we're continuing to do. As as it's been put out there.
Our town and village are both in person when they're meeting at this point in time. Um, and other meetings as well.
Yeah.
The directive, then our village is not holding it up or which, don't get me wrong, I'm I'm not. I wouldn't mind seeing you guys in person one, the one, you know, once at some point, so I'd like us to think about that, doesn't have to be this time, but I'm, I want to move toward that.
Let's have it as an agenda item for the next meeting is to review what the recommendations are at that time and explore what options. Might be available to us to do that, to do so.
Mr. Pratt, are you uh and are you in the office, back in the office now? Not currently, but are you back, you're going in the office occasionally?
I started back in the office today.
SU might be a good spot. Never mind, it's okay, we can, we can talk about it later.
Talk about it then, let's talk about it at the next meeting. Slow and deliberate.
We've been slow.
We have, and look how safe we are. So.
Don't get me started, all right, we better move on, we'll talk tomorrow.
Okay, so July twenty-first, five thirty via Zoom. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
So long.